I don't know for sure what it says about us.
They're sitting, they're pretty standard.
You're sitting, you're sitting for the open meeting, excuse me.
Hey Brian?
Yes sir?
So you, you need to start the meeting and then if you feel like you need to recuse yourself, you can and you'll still, as long as you started with the form, you're, you guys will be okay.
And so Don's gonna just run the whole meeting and I'll step down here in a second.
Well yeah, you need to start it though to indicate that we had a form when we started.
We'll do introductions and then we'll add them from there.
That makes sense.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. Alright, it's done. So you better start then. Oh, this meeting to order, this is the Barnard County Planning and zoning commission. We're located 1500 Highway to Sandpoint Idaho, first floor conference room, we're online Zoom, teleconferencing, YouTube Live, straight. It's 5:33. And like I said, we're in the first, first floor of the Barnard County Conference Room. So would everybody please stand, President Lindtis?
President Lindtis.
United States of America, the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible and infinite in its power.
So with the commissioners, form on the right.
Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Frank Buck.
And Commissioner Bailey as acting chair, is there any changes in the agenda? I think we have the minutes for the 19th, is that correct?
This is another second.
The minutes, which minutes? August.
Not 19, sorry.
Oh okay, so it's, it's August 18th, so it's.
August 18th.
Anybody have any checks? Okay. So being it's 5:34 and a half, our first file is going to be additional, I just lost it. So first file, this conditional use permit 0011-21, conditional use permit, communications tower, Nathan and Lisa Weiss are requesting to revise the original application for conditional use permit for the construction of a new 73 foot monopole communications tower, not to exceed 75 feet in height to support new panel antennas, microwave dishes and other associated equipment for inland cellular area on a five acre parcel. The applicant is also proposing to build a 30 by 30 fence compound, which will include an eight by twelve equipment building, an H-frame for power and telephone connections. The application previously posed to construction 80 foot communications tower to allow for future 43 feet of collection, co-location amounting to the potential height of 114 feet to be housed in a 30 by 30 compound, including an eight by twelve equipment building and an H-frame for power and telephone connections. Property is on Rule 5, project is located off East Shore Road in Section 9, township 61 North Range 4 West, Bayside, Gradian. What's the interest? I have a conflict of interest, I own property on Lower Mud Gulch Road now, so I'm going to step down and join the audience for tonight's proceedings because the two files conflict.
Alright, okay. So proceed with the hearing. And, well let's see, was everybody here at the last time? Was everyone here, you're all here at the last one, right, so you remember the procedure? Okay. So our procedure is, we start out with a staff report, then the applicant has an opportunity to add anything or expand on it, whatever. After that, the public in, either online or present in the room can comment on it. The applicant then has a, has an opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public. After that, after the applicant's response, close the public hearing portion and get on to deliberations. Once the commissioner, so, well there, there it is then. That's pretty much. Says what I said, so. So we'll start out, like it says on top, staff, does that staff report?
Right. The staff. I'm Ted James for the record, thank you for being here tonight, commissioners as well as members of the public, we appreciate your participation. So we're here tonight to continue a file for a proposal of the tower. Up the shore road. As mentioned before, it was proposed to be 80 feet with co-location. Now we're looking at 73 feet, but not exceeding 75 feet, so no greater than 75 feet. It's going to be located on a five acre property. There'll be one car or truck that'll visit per month for maintenance. So these were the changes, kind of highlighted here again, instead of having co-location up to 114 feet, now we're just looking at 75 feet, no greater than that. East Shore Road is county owned and county maintained. This is the new site plan that was submitted by the applicant, prepared by Dan Provo, Mid Hill License Surveyor, and as we could see on this site plan, we do meet the setback requirement for the Barnard County Revised Code. To the north, we have 78.62 feet and to the east, we have 178.82 feet. Here is the tower design. And that very top line shows that with antennas attached, we're at 75. And previously, I think the staff report before that I had prepared, I wrote that this property was within a fire district and I just want the record to stand corrected that does not appear to be within one, and I think the math layer is a bit off. So we rerouted to agencies for comment on August 3rd. And, you know, no, nothing remarkable, and just EQ said their previous comment stands. And then all health district responded, no comment, all of the agencies did not respond. Then has some public comments for this file, and this is just summary, the staff report goes into them much more in depth, and of course commissioners have access to the letters at full. And, you know, just briefly kind of discuss these comments, you know, there was comments about, you know, the construction commencing prior to the issuance of the conditional use permit, there was discussion of concerns about impact to health, as we've heard before, designing the tower not being tree-like insofar as it's not going to blend with the surrounding environmental features, can't be covered, critique of staff inclusion 5 saying that it's not a necessary facility. You know, and then just lastly, kind of generally speaking, a critique that, you know, this tower is, is not going to benefit the neighborhood more than existing coverage. And we'll go into that more, there's a, a nice FCC map we'll take a look at and how the applicant's representative kind of discussed that. No. So, again, one of the comments I think was, was addressed here with the applicant's recent submission of a propagation map, kind of showing the coverage that this tower addition to the area would provide. And again, we're talking inland cellular, right, so there are a variety of cell service providers in the area, we're talking about extended ones specifically. This is the map, and I just have the link here, it's kind of a placeholder for the applicant's representative to speak about. Ultimately, staff did find that the updated proposal was consistent with Barnard County Revised Code, and as a result, we are recommending approval with conditions. The first three are, are pretty standard, and, you know, it's got to be designed and implemented in accordance to how the site plan was proposed, can't supersede deep restrictions, county setbacks shall be met. You know, it's, it'll expire if it's not issued within two years, and you need all these conditions. There's got to be temporary erosion control measures kind of established prior to construction. They have to have a grading stormwater, erosion control management plan for the code, and obviously they'll have to obtain a building location permit. Finally, the last condition, and I, we kind of came up with this, the assistant director, Jacob and I, kind of came up with this condition just to make sure that we're holding them accountable and that they are, the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove that it is a necessary facility and that it's also convenient. And I think that the propagation map certainly helps with the convenience part, and in terms of the necessity, I'll kind of lay that on the applicant representative tonight to kind of discuss. So at this point, I can take any questions.
Questions, staff? Oh, oh for now, but I assume we're gonna talk in one week. Certainly, I think that's the critical consideration, yeah. Okay, so, thank you. So at this time, the applicant representative, come on up. Let's see, I'm looking at you, it's the last time. Which I can start.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Justin Hoppen, and I'm representing inland cellular and East Towers on the app, this proposal. Don't want to reiterate too much about it, but it's basically a 73 foot monopole with antennas on top that will extend two feet above the top of the tower, so 75 foot height restriction is what we placed on ourselves, like this particular location. Again, it meets the setbacks. Let me dive right into the necessity part, because that seems like where everybody is questioning. We provided the propagation map that you already seen, that shows the proposed coverage from that location, if the site were to be built and turned on. Currently, inland cellular does not have any service in that area, so this is providing new service for their company. As well as T-Mobile has submitted a co-location application, and they're interested in going on this tower. So we provided this as an example of that T-Mobile service, it doesn't currently exist in the area. So you can see Priest Lake and the pink is T-Mobile's current service, so as you can see, T-Mobile does, doesn't have any service or very little in this area, there's a few places where, it looks like the paint may have sprayed into the area, but it's not strong enough to handle our call, any kind of data. Because there's not a tab to turn on inland cellular, we can't show exactly what their coverage is, but as I mentioned, T-Mobile wishes to go on this site because it provides the service level that they're looking for. And it's map out 21. This one applies to the other cases as well. This shows the Mud Gulch, the Coolin and East Priest Lake locations and the proposed service area. So what this map does is it really just shows you that the three sites that Weiss Towers is looking to construct in inland cellular all work together, and it provides seamless coverage, that was the design. We're on the east side of the lake is the focus, the tower that was mentioned by some of the public is on the far north west side of the lake, which is not one of the objectives for inland cellular, as well as T-Mobile, because they're wishing to piggyback on this location, so. We believe that that's, by reducing the height to 73 feet with antennas at maximum 75, that there'll be very little obstruction visually, basically the trees average about 55 to 60 feet in this area, so virtually most of the tower will be concealed by existing tree canopy around the site, only the top of the facility would be visible, and that section has to be visible for the antennas to help it correct. Do you have any questions? I can also turn on some of the other layers, you can kind of see Verizon and that other map that people brought up. Actually, this site doesn't, it was done in May, so, or this map was done in May and the site was done afterwards, turned on, so it doesn't show that new Verizon site up in the north west corner.
What about Sprint?
Sprint and T-Mobile are like company now.
Okay.
T-Mobile versus Sprint. There's mainly the three big guys, AT&amp;T, Verizon and T-Mobile. US Cellular is kind of in there, but.
So does AT&amp;T have coverage there?
AT&amp;T. They have a limited amount of coverage.
She's gray.
So they're blue. As you can see, south of the lake, so there's Coolin pops up on the back, but the Mud Gulch site is an area where they currently have 34 coverage, which would be south of the blue area, Mud Gulch sites in this area.
Okay. So that's voice, what about data, for AT&amp;T? Well, this is real, I think that's really data.
There's data, I switched it. Typically, voice is a little larger because you don't need as much bandwidth.
Alright, so now that we've seen it, go back and put T-Mobile on there.
There's voice.
So there's a, there's a big gap.
Yeah, you probably don't have service there.
Is that the experience up there? Yeah, that's, that's one of the issues, it's unactivated, hasn't paid. Okay. Any other questions at this time for the applicant? So I, I think, right now, I'm just gonna say something, you know, it could be irrelevant, but this whole thing, cell companies going into Priest Lake area to get business, and this was all about, to serve the area, you know, with another, another service provider, which, and we are in the cellular age, everybody wants or has a cell phone and wants to pull down data out of the sky. So, going to the necessity issue. I guess we'll wait to hear from some of the, this is a very small representation of the population, Priest Lake area, but necessity, I suppose, people wanting service may have approached the company and said, can we get service? Where they're looking around, or somehow that's known by this company that located the tower, and therefore it's, it's a business opportunity that may be achievable. I guess that's, I don't know, I'm grasping for words here.
Well, if you're a T-Mobile customer, you know, obviously you want service wherever you go, and if you're a T-Mobile customer now and you're on the plane, you don't have any service, so.
And there's other areas where, well even, even there, I mean, over here on this side of the ridge, you know, on the outside, it's pretty extensive, so I would expect there's a lot of T-Mobile customers in there. So if you go to, if you come from Spokane and you're going to the lake and you've got T-Mobile service, you're stuck. At this point, you don't have.
Yeah, I mean, these cellular facilities aren't, aren't any different than a grocery store, you know, the first grocery store comes in, which you can't say, no other grocery stores can come in, it's very much just business, so this is the need here, like, these companies are just trying.
So, and I, so looking at the exhibit that you gave us, it's a little hard to decipher. So down there, where it's plain, it says Mud Gulch and is surrounded by a green cloud.
Yeah, there's a, if you look near that corner in the end, there's a little circle, that's the Mud Gulch location, and same with Coolin, same with Priest.
Right, those are the localities, but then, in the upper left-hand corner, there's a color scheme going from red to green.
Yeah.
The red says minus 40 next to it, the green red.
Yeah, those are the decibel levels of the signal, basically anything, once it reaches minus 100, it's virtually unusable, so anything that's orange and red, it's not a good signal for it, anything that's green, blue and yellow, it's not.
So is this a projected strength of signal?
These are all projected because, yeah, the site's sort of part of that.
Right, yeah, I was just thinking. And that strength of signal that's created there, green, that's due to topography, the limit of that?
Some of it's topography, some of it's a tree clutter will stop the signal as well, but mainly topography.
Is that? Shows, it's interesting, oh that's right, the other side is, yeah, up there, we're gonna be doing it later.
Yeah, these three sites are basically designed to hand off and work with each other.
Alright, cause you've got. Okay. One of the things about the map that I think is important to note is that this, this map of the inland, the proposed inland cellular coverage really only goes up maybe about half the way up Priest Lake, it stops at Eight Mile Island, which is, or so, it's kind of hard to say because there's so much signal back up over the top of the actual geographic map, where you see Eight Mile Island up towards the top of the page, that's, that's right below that kind of big book on the east shore of Priest Lake, right above where it says Priest Lake. And when I look at the coverage maps of Verizon and AT&amp;T, they actually look like they have great coverage up that far. So.
This is just the East Priest Lake site, so this would be the proposed service levels, just that site, so you can see, you've got service climbing to the north part of the lake, but it's pretty limited.
Is that based on the same color scheme?
The color schemes are.
It doesn't reverse, the red looks, red is predominant there, that by daily color scheme, that's one red.
Okay, it's reversed, okay.
Yeah, okay, so red is good, and green, you get the worst of it.
Yeah, blue is around minus 115.
Oh, so that's really.
So that's pretty, so blue's pretty good.
Which green?
Green is minus 105.
So green isn't even a good signal, yeah. Eight, forty, eight, six, eight.
This was the one tower though, by itself, not intended with the other two, correct? This map was created just based off the one.
This map is just that, these.
But those other towers are further south, they're not really bound up this far north.
Yeah, the Coolin site, you might be able to see, and I didn't know, it's actually it's off the map.
Yeah, it's off the map, so. This is upper area.
This is just to show what this site would cover, as opposed to somebody from the public submitted a Verizon map that showed that some of the signal sprang into this area, but it's from a location clear on the other side. that showed that some of the signal spring into this area, but it's from a location clear on the other side. And obviously, this is a good location, it's T-Mobile, it's T-Mobile.
Well, I mean, I just have to say, from these data we've seen so far, I don't, I don't know that it convinces me of the necessity. Because I think it's redundant coverage to other providers that are in this location. To, with that, with that pertaining to the mud gulch site? That may be different, because that's where, you know, that one looks like, maybe here's it, it's by itself and it's a relative. I'm looking at the color scheme, right? I don't see any, well, the light blue goes, okay, the light blue goes out another quadrant out, or southwest and northeast, maybe to the northwest, but I don't see any yellow at all. That's gobbled up, but maybe that's this other slight hint up at the turn of the wood, forest pattern.
And if I could explain something about redundancy, at least, you know, where we're standing currently here, we're, we're being subjected to redundancy of multiple carrier signals, so just standing here. So redundancy necessarily negates necessity, because this is a particular company that doesn't have service in this area. So without it, it's a necessity, they wouldn't have no coverage. And T-Mobile wouldn't have coverage.
I think, the way I read the comp plan, is the necessity that we're to evaluate, it's not the necessity to the company, it's the necessity to the public. And, and I think the public, if they have two well-known service providers that are providing similar coverage, I question whether it'd be the bar for a necessity to come in with another provider with pretty much the same coverage, at least from what I can tell. It's a little bit hard to say with these maps, because it's hard to, hard to see the geography underneath, because there's so much color in the coverage map, but it looks to me like we're talking about the red zone, right? The red, this particular tower, the red zone is the one that has sufficient signal strength to provide good coverage. The green and the blue, it's, the signal strength is too low. And, and I look at the other Verizon and AT&amp;T's coverage, and they seem to cover that area of red. Up at the, and this is specifically talking about the north tower. And this is the, all the towers, the Priest Lake tower.
Up on, on the west side.
Yeah.
Up by the northern, maybe from there, as soon as they activate the tower, that should help service the east side also.
And my terrain is the issue, right? Because these, these are frequencies that don't go through dirt. So, or trees, the moisture absorbs this signal, so if that tower over by, to the, to the west is tall enough that it can get over the terrain and over the trees, it could help with the east side, I guess.
I just turned on AT&amp;T in this area, and you can see that the tower location is in, in this location here. And they don't have service. Turn it on, uh.
Data. Yeah, still.
I'll do some, one, do some. Oh, well, you can come up, I guess.
Yeah, if you, sir, if you wanna help out here.
I need them myself, and with Inland Cellular and Tower, so. So, little history and why you haven't heard from us. We purchased Spectrum up in this county three years ago. Inland Cellular's been around, well, our family's been playing telecommunications since nineteen fifty down in the Lewiston Prescott area, more Washington, and southern Idaho, central Idaho. So we've been doing cellular service since nineteen eighty-nine, and down in, from Latah County, south, and then Washington. And we served thirteen counties over those years. And so last, three years ago, we bought Spectrum, which these guys have, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, three years ago, and started expanding to the north. So this is our first site in the county, so we're very new to this area, we're working way north. I own the house where we are proposing to build the tower. We have put antennas on the house, just like internet companies that put one house, when I purchased this house three years ago, it was an internet translator tower, house, beat up the lake. Your one PC provides internet service up in that area. So, but that good, you know, our, our point is, it's good coverage, good location, to enhance the coverage up north and at the lake. What we've done, what we have is agreements with the other carriers, AT&amp;T and Verizon. Both, we can work on their networks, they do work on ours, but they choose which sites they do want to work on. AT&amp;T will work on this site. They do not have cover, I mean, we found, only, I don't know why this map actually shows coverage up here, it is light blue, but I have AT, I have four phones, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile now, and Inland. Up until Verizon's tower being put on the east-west side of the shore, there was no coverage. The house had a booster, and that was the only way you could get it. More people that use the network, the coverage depletes tremendously, just like your internet does. If a whole bunch of people are using it in the old day, it goes down. So our engineers, which I should have told them, use it, use, I mean, I know what the coverage is already. We do have coverage of the river, north end of the lake, with our antennas on the house at thirty feet, or twenty-five feet, whatever it is. Those antennas are planning to come down, they were just, they're not high gain, they're not special, they're just what we had to get some service, because there was absolutely nothing up there for the years, so we've. So AT&amp;T, this is a select site that AT&amp;T will work, AT&amp;T and Verizon do not work together. So anyone who has AT&amp;T phone will not work on this except for nine-one-one purposes, and that's very questionable. And not, and even AT&amp;T doesn't work unanimously across my network either. Currently, I have the, only Apple phones currently are working, because AT&amp;T is choosing not to let Samsung work on all the towers. So it's, it's always changing, it's difficult. The frequencies used to be the CDMA up in, this is LTE, VoLTE, voice over LTE. There used to be signals under CDMA four years ago, which there is no CDMA up here, well, Verizon. Yeah, they didn't turn it on there. CDMA, they like to bleed over signal, so water cutters bleed together really, really good, that was good on CDMA. LTE, if you have them touching, it eats away and doesn't work very good. And the LTE is really for data purposes, so they're all trying to get good data. What we have, so I just alluded to, we, we are trying to build up whole corridor there. AT&amp;T will use this. The Coolin's tower that's already approved, they're gonna use that one. They have one just about four miles away on whatever bay that is, but there, where AT&amp;T and Verizon have been for numerous years, with that.
Was it for your bay?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Between Coolin and Indian Creek, that hill over there, where it was at, yeah. So they, they build up even my Coolin site, even though they're so close, that the covers that we're gonna cover is gonna fill in very nicely for them. We've also got the Zibley, and we've got permission to go on the Zibley tower, which is right here, so basically, we will be able, where you, where you see, seeing the shaded area where we don't have coverage by having those three locations, because you, we can't, we can blast up north. I have coverage up here today off my house, it's not great. And I think the engineers designed it for high capacity, because there's, we do think internet people are gonna use it, so they do engineer it that way. So we have covers there, it'll be better from having extra height. AT&amp;T, they're, they've got first gen for emergency responders, that's why this is filling in one of their holes. And that could, that, why their AT&amp;T map shows this, it could be because we already have coverage there, so they rightfully utilize what frequencies we already have on air to offset things that they're mandated by the SCC to build out, so. That's, because there is no AT&amp;T up there. I don't know, you can go on the local chat up there, and they'll say it, so. They, they are broadcasting from right here. And that's where that coverage is covering, like, more users you get, the worse their signal's gonna get. Our other site is right here, and so it's gonna fill in the rest of the lake. And this, they have no, Verizon has no coverage on, well, spotty, right through here, because there are signals over here, even today. I drove up there yesterday, and very spotty through the Coolin proper area. As they turn up sites, they need to actually turn down some of their signal, because they're not, like I said, they're not, that signal can't bleed into other, into the other site, so they need to turn down some things, so they don't bleed, they need to stop that signal, so. It's good, although, as they bring up more sites, it does change. As you've seen earlier, T-Mobile has nothing, T-Mobile's electing not to roam on, only ones they do roam on right now is, that I know of, is AT&amp;T, and it's very, very spotty, but they will roam on AT&amp;T. They don't roam on Inland, they don't roam on Verizon. AT&amp;T does go on, they're on, I have about a hundred towers, they go on, they're on about forty of them. So they're, we're a prominent builder for having AT, or T-Mobile co-locate on our facilities. The towers, they ran their analysis, that sets, they'll get sixty-two feet. They will work okay there, we can maybe even put them in within our, a lot of times, the big guys really like to be separated by ten feet, but they work out with us pretty good, and they sometimes will go inside the same level as we are, so. FCC may come, or, yeah, the FCC and the government competition, so they off, you know, before there was two providers, there was A&amp;B, McCasay, you know, one, and then was also the Bells. Inland was also one of those, we were competing against AT&amp;T cell one back in, since nineteen eighty-nine, where the one was still around, they all murdered and all these other things, so. We're here, we're continuing to expand. We, we go generally where there is no other providers. We're, we've down south, we've gone Imida, Fernwood, Santa, Highway Three corridor, there's no other coverage there. We put service in there. Corlaine Tribe, where we're getting close with them, we put a tower, we're putting a tower right behind the casino there, because we're working in Vanuatu County. And got, got some things in Coopnee, jumped up to here. We've got another application we'll be bringing here for, here, a couple more here shortly in this county, where virtually there's very, very poor coverage. The big carriers really focus where the population, it's just, we focus where there generally isn't. Yeah, we jumped again, trying to get some things done, but we, like I said, this was the very first application, trying to understand the procedures on how to do it, so. Apologize for that, because we really wanted to have this on for the summer, but probably had something that not great. Little history, I'll try to answer your questions.
So my question, really, it's still the same, is when I look at this map that we've been given, the, the top of this map is more or less at the top of where you have that map positioned and scaled to. Because it, because it's Eight Mile Island is right here, Eight Mile Island is.
Right, so with our, going on the Zibley tower that's over here, that's gonna fill in the gap that we have on there, so. We're co-locating on existing one, we cannot go on the Verizon tower, I mean, we're mandated bring coverage, so we gotta do something. We could go on the Verizon tower, but virtually we'd have a blanket, same type of coverage as what Verizon has, because we have to bring coverage. We have a license to serve, and so we go on the Verizon site. We're not gonna enhance any of the coverages that they have, so Verizon customers can download nine-one-one on our, on our network, and we're gonna definitely, from where we're at, they're gonna be able to use their phones for those type of purposes. AT&amp;T will, if, if they do come to the area, they, you know, they don't generally go where it's right, they do when they have to, but they would probably go where our tower is, if we're able to accommodate them on our, on our site over the Verizon one. Because they don't really look to Mere unless it's really for population purposes, that that's where it was at.
Yeah, I guess my point is, there's already good AT&amp;T coverage and Verizon coverage from that Eight Mile Island point on the lake south.
So, right, so there, so we can roam on AT&amp;T, we can roam on Verizon, so we're, our customers, they come up here, we'll get be able to utilize their network. AT&amp;T, you say is there Eight Mile, but we're at, I'm at, I don't know what mile we are, but we're up there further, so.
You're a bit blind here.
Well, or you're south of lines here, but I get coverage up there, no one else.
That's not what this map shows.
No, this tower is like three point two miles north of Indian Creek.
Yeah.
One of the top, that's definitely south of mine.
Yeah, twice out. It's, it's, it appears to be more or less east of Eight Mile Island from this map. It's hard to tell because it's in the state of geography, but, but maybe even a little bit south of Eight Mile Island. Which is below that constriction point in the length of the map there, so.
I, um.
Go ahead.
I mean, your one PC's an internet provider up there, they're looking to, I mean, they've, they've got blockages from my house. They're trying to serve up, Moose Bikes is on the Porter's house. It's, it's, they've got, I believe, they, they provide out service from out there, I believe, they used to maybe. So I mean, there's places that people can't see because of, you know, being on people's houses, they, they use them as hotspots and broadcast out. Well, we're able to see really good across to the west from the house. So virtually, there's no internet coverage from anyone that's gonna come from the Verizon tower. So this isn't just, so White Tower is a constructed tower for multiple purposes. You've got T-Mobile that wants to go there, Inland Cellular wants to go there, and then your one PC who's already, who's already providing services from that property on that five acre park. So it's to enhance more than just Inland Cellular. AT&amp;T, like I said, will not work, I mean, it shows it, but it doesn't. And if it does, it's because they're on our network.
Okay, well, thank you for the, and I, I see, no, I have to stand up.
Yeah, thanks, Don. The, the concern I have is that we're, we're, we may be overthinking the necessity and in turn limiting commerce. And I, I'm concerned that, that while, while it may not appear, or while, while it may appear that it may not be necessary, I'm, I'm still concerned that the potential of causing another problem such as limiting commerce would be a much bigger issue. And, and so I, I just want you guys to take that into consideration when you talk about, is this necessary? Because he, these guys are representing a, a different you know, a different product. So just, just something to be aware of and think about.
And there's no, there's no test in the code for proving necessity.
And that's. Yep.
Yeah, okay, alright. Well, that was, that was a lot of good information. Appreciate the issue that you kind of filled in a lot of the gaps, the target gaps, that don't pay part of the gap. But I think it does go to help us understand what the facility is, what the coverage is, and the competition in the area. We're all aware of, so towers going up elsewhere in the county, but what a network.
Can I speak specifically to what the code says? Yes, so when it speaks to necessity, this is what it says, and I'll quote. "The commission shall consider the public convenience and necessity, so the commission of the communication tower and any adverse effect the facility would have upon properties in the vicinity, and may require such reasonable restrictions and conditions of development as to uphold the purpose and intent of this title and the progress of plan." And I would add that communication dollars are conditionally allowed in virtually all zones in the county, so they are permitted with conditions and conditions.
Yeah, could you read the opening statement? Yeah, could you read the opening statement in that section?
Sure.
Cause I think that's informative.
Absolutely. It's a 12 dash 488 C and it starts off, the commission shall consider the public convenience and necessity.
Um, that wasn't the section I'm thinking about. There's a, I think that section is called special uses. Maybe.
I believe so, but it's specifically for communication towers, yes.
They go above, because there's a number of special uses, communication tower is only one of them. And what it says, I'm paraphrasing, is we acknowledge that these kinds of uses can have significant impacts on sacred properties. Therefore, and then it goes into talk about each one of the communication towers we want to. So I understand what Milton is saying. But I don't jump from there and say, well, then that says put a cell tower wherever you want with appropriate conditions. Because we don't want to limit commerce, we don't want that to happen. I think that's pretty clear in the complaint. So. I think necessity here is driven by do we have adequate service, which includes competition, don't get me wrong. If there was only one provider here, it would be a no brainer. Um, it has a lot of those. Right. But it appears there's two, based on what I can tell. Maybe down south, we'll talk about that one a little later. That one may be a little bit more of a question in my mind at the moment. Bye. All right, so thank you for your presentation. All right, now. All right, so that was the applicant's presentation. So anyone who wishes to. Talk about initially use permit 11 to 21. This is the shore site. Place your name and address for the record and I can state power search. You can add whatever you want. You have your exhibits. So if you want to add something to that, please. Or anybody else? Anybody? Want to talk right here? Yeah, sure. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Brett Kellogg, uh, 1991 West Bear Creek Drive, Nampa. 8666. Uh, we own a 10 and a half acres directly to the east of the applicant. Uh, sits on the hillside overlooking their property with direct views of the lake. Uh, we purchased it with the intent to develop. Uh, the house is going to go where the cell tower will be at the light of sight. Uh, the discussion initially was for it to be 80 feet. With a high probability of it going to 114 feet to accommodate the T-Mobile co-location. Which at that time they said was necessary, it had go to 114 to accommodate that. Uh, it was labor adjusted down now where they could do it all at 75 feet, including the T-Mobile co-location at 60. Uh, but there has been no reassurance that I've seen that says they're they're precluding future expansion to go higher than 75 feet. That's being discussed today. So at the height today, we are going to be impacted. It's going to destroy the view that we purchased that property for. We bought it in that location for R5 zoning. Uh, there's only four parcels there with no opportunity for any other development in front of us. Given the conservation easement between Diamond Park and East Shore Road. So we felt very safe that we could build there and have these views forever. Now we're dealing with this tower and the uncertainty as to future development taking it even higher, which would make it a real mess for us. Uh, in terms of the desirability, which then impacts property values for us. We intend on holding this property long term and probably retiring up there. We didn't intend to have a cell tower on our front window. We're certainly not against, uh, you know, a development and expanding services and access. Uh, but we question whether that's really the case here. And that gets back to this section 12 488 on convenience and necessity. Uh, given the other carriers that are in the area and services. In fact, I work 100% remotely. I'm a software company, everything I do is on my computer and virtual meetings. I've been up there all week getting 70 meg service. I've been doing business just like I was in the office without a single glitch. Not one. It's been perfect, it's been great. So in terms of at least our location, we have fantastic coverage from that Reader Bay Tower. Um, you know, that section 12 488, I think also talks about mitigating the impact to adjoining properties. And there are things like trees, making it look like a tree, doing things that would offset the the. A metal alley tower in our trouble. And that hasn't been addressed, but maybe there's middle ground there.
Okay, you, let me ask you one question. So and that's that's been a topic of discussion through all its various hearings on cell towers. Camouflage. In your opinion, with the lower height and so. Anyway, that right now, that's a condition of approval at 75 feet. In from so in order for them to change that, they'd have to apply for a change.
Well, I mean, I think the things that would satisfy us, one is a definitive. Ruling preventing future expansion of the tower vertically. So this is the height of the tower. It could no ever by this owner or future owners be expanded in height. Um, and number two, that reasonable efforts be made to camouflage it. At least to the extent where it penetrates the canopy so that everybody can win in this thing. We don't have to be the only party to lose.
Okay, all right. Thanks, sir. Okay, so.
Uh, my name is Mary Porter. We live in 11585 East Shore Road next to the proposed tower. Uh, not long after Mason purchased one of the two homes at our little four lot residential neighborhood. We found out that he was president of Inland Cellular, didn't he, Tim Littier? And he admitted that his property wasn't a good location for the tower. And he asked us if we could, if he could rotate this tower on our upper lot, which has height and unrestricted views. And we turned him down. Um, as did the owners of the of the undeveloped lot that Brandon's just spoken speaking about. So he submitted an application on April 21st stating that construction would begin in July. But he didn't wait until July. And without Bonner County's approval, he completed the entire tower base prior to the June commission's hearing. I noticed that this new application received on July 2nd or 21st states that construction will begin in October. As it it wasn't already completed months ago. I respectfully request that the commission deny this application because the applicant can't meet a number of the conditions for approvals. Proven as law required. The most obvious reason to deny is the necessity given the proposed geographic location. Verizon's now fully operational 175 foot tower is only 1.56 miles. Um, from this location. Um, and it was built to accommodate multiple carriers and eliminate the need to other towers nearby. The Verizon Tower is so close that we can see it from our property. All the benefits the applicant claims his 75 foot tower will provide are already being provided by the Verizon Tower. Or more services will be available as soon as other carriers co-locate on that tower. And those benefits will be available to a far larger geographic area. According to the application, the proposed tower is designed for a future co-location. I suggest that many more inland cellular customers will be served if the applicant co-locates on the Verizon Tower. The applicant can't meet conditions A, five, six, or seven. Because ground disturbing activities and construction in the base were completed months ago without Bonner County's knowledge, approval, or oversight. Since a proposed tower will rest on that base, there's no way to know if the security procedures used would meet the required standards. For that reason, it's also impossible to know if in the future the tower will create a hazard or endanger the persons owner near the near the property as a conclusion of law through. Bonner County's rules and regulations are in place for a reason. And anyone, whether a homeowner or a big communications company planning to build in the county should abide by that. How can the county expect compliance from anyone in Inland Cellular and Inuit or the Dills? Whether they probably go and pay a small fine. It's a very dangerous precedent going forward.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ed Porter. I'm Mary's husband. I live at 11585 East Shore Road. By the way, Mr. Weiss offered us $300 per month to build that tower on our property. Just over one year ago, in approving a 175 foot Verizon Tower approximately 1.5 miles away, visible from and providing coverage to the entire proposed Wise Tower location. Milton Overton, the county's planning director, said. The permit was issued to close coverage gaps in the city of Nordman and the Priest Lake area. I suggest that by strategic location, not I own a property and think for personal economic reasons, I will build a cell tower. Verizon not only closed any coverage gap for our area, but in words from this commission. The proposed facility was engineered and built to accommodate future co-location services. Additionally, the tower height has been increased to allow for viable positions below Verizon's antennas. Where the other carriers that will not be blocked by trees, the hill crest, or terrain. I call Verizon and Verizon is willing to co-locate. Um, any of the additional carriers that would wish to participate. The applicants blatant misrepresentations, other carriers colorful laps. Foundation construction without oversight, trying to fool a community with vague phrases like the proposed facility will have a positive impact on associated functions by expanding the communication levels without any associated evidence is a great concern. Verizon's tower right right now provides is live and provides for 911 service. Weiss states the tower has been planned for other future carrier use of the facility, thus reducing the need for other towers in this area. If Weiss and the commission really care about co-location and reducing the number of cell towers, isn't this the perfect opportunity to do so? Wouldn't inland co-locating on the Verizon Tower be more effective and reduce the need for another tower in this area? And wouldn't this co-location also yield an even less obstructive design by not building another tower at all? It seems very unfair that the board would require co-location and that Weiss supports co-location. But when presented with a viable option for co-location at work, construction of another tower in the same coverage area is under consideration. Once established, won't this precedent invite even more towers in the same area? Perhaps a better policy well within the auspices of Bonner County Code 12 488 would be to require all tower applicants to first prove that a need can't be met on an existing tower. Unless Mr. Weiss can prove the need for another tower with the same level of quality and certainty provided by Verizon. I urge the commission to allow the co-location opportunity required and that Verizon provided to work for the citizens, Weiss and Verizon by denying this permit.
Okay, anyone else want to testify? Nobody online? All right, then it's the applicant would like to respond to comments, please.
Justin Mabbett, applicant. Um, I'd like to respond first to Mr. Kellogg's comments. So one of the mitigation measures that we put into place based on his concern was to limit the tower height to 73 feet. And we eliminated future extensions, so that's no longer a part of our application. So the tower would be limited to 73 with the antennas going up to 75.
Is it okay if I ask a question?
No, I can't. Just for just to clarify what that means.
Well. Let me ask that, so. Clarify so that you're willing to have a condition approval to limit it to 73 feet?
Well, I I think.
That's what was asked, that's why for this round.
I mean, by making the application specifically for that height and that's what's before you now limited your decision.
Right, and this decision could be written that way to say this shall be 75. Yeah, it's a. Code says a condition is from it can be reviewed. Again, it says some something else that goes on either a change or a necessity. Uh, also the applicant can come back and apply for another conditions to whatever to modify. Uh, modification, so staff doesn't.
Yeah, uh, just looking at the tower design prepared by the建筑architect, I believe. Uh, it does say 75 feet with those antennas on there. So I just wanted everyone to be on the same page. The tower itself is 73 with the antennas, we're looking at 75.
We're just worried about future expansion.
Right. And that's always a constant.
Limiting that.
Okay, sure. We can't have the.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Point taken. It's a. That is a, that is a condition. This is a monopole. Uh, is it, I, again, not having the other, well, I've got the application here. Is it the exact same pole just limited to 73 feet versus the one before that was taller with the possible extension of 114 or 144? Are getting added physically in the future, could this be added? Physically.
Well, any, yeah, any tower could be, could be added to.
To an extent.
Yeah, but we would have to obtain another condition.
That's, that's right. So.
At this time, we're not, we're not interested in that.
Okay.
Cause I, we're, we're focused on inland, cellular, and T-Mobile. So, uh, one of the other mitigation measures is we're offering to paint the tower as well as all the equipment on the tower. So that while normally the antennas are a white color. So if they're painted to match the color of the tower, then it will be as noticeable. Spotted, so that that's another form of mitigation that that we're offering. It's part of the application. As far as Mary's comment on the foundation, we've submitted to staff a copy of the documentation from a third party special inspector on the foundation. So the foundation was built as per the engineer's plan. And it meets all their requirements because the concrete has been broken and tested. So it meets the PSI requirements. So and all of that information has been submitted to our calendar. And then one other thing I just wanted to mention, because there's been so much focus on this other tower that Verizon's built. If if that tower was really the tower that would help all of these companies, we would all be building there. And Nathan's not opposed to co-locating antennas on other people's towers. He only builds a tower when the necessity is there. The Verizon Tower and their coverage. I haven't been down to Hills Resort in a while, but if I had a Verizon phone, I would doubt that it would work very well down at Hills Resort, at that Kavanaugh's Resort. Because this, the Verizon Tower with the height and the location is shooting over the top of those areas. This tower that we're proposing today is focused in on these areas. It's focused in on the resort areas as well as the residential areas. That's the focus and the coverage check. So we were looking for just a broad general coverage that the Verizon side is doing. And actually Verizon someday will come back and fill in this area as well. So we'll, we'll have more sites, I guarantee. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
Nope, thank you. Okay, that ends the public testimony portion, so we'll close that and deliberation.
See, it's on the east side. You get up there further towards Sandbaker Shores, went through there, along the road way, you don't have the reception, and down at Sandbaker Shores, reception is better because you're moving. On the west side is where the problem was with reception. And it was spotted when she got up past Crystal Freedom into there, Nordman. Then down on the water, we all knew it certainly spotted, but the new tower should be taking care of that. And where it's on the hill, I would think that it would pick up the rest, much of the rest of the side also. And when they came for us, if I remember correctly, were the stipulations, was that they provide other carriers to be providing that tower also?
Sure, it seems that's correct. Yeah, it's, and it's, it's acknowledged. Principles of putting a tower up is by yourself. And to keep, essentially to keep the proliferation of towers now.
And it's odd that the other tower, the Verizon tower, is so close to the ones that are closed. Right now, if you're down, moving around, you got good reception, decent reception.
Yeah. It's just that it works up there. We don't have the Verizon tower in operation.
It is in operation.
It is, yes.
Are there some questions? Some of the maps we looked at, some of them were a stipulation that's everything weren't up to date. You can look at maps online.
Oh, so those are, those are not a date.
Yeah, but there's pretty good maps online that show Verizon coverage. I don't know how it changes, but. Thankfully, I guess I'm torn. On the one hand, it doesn't appear that this is going to extend, provide a lot more factors versus what already exists there. What it does do, though, is give us a location for T-Mobile, one of the other three big providers. So anybody who's a T-Mobile subscriber, maybe one who doesn't live there full-time. I guess that anybody who lives there full-time would choose a provider that has COVID, since that's where they live. Today, he'd probably pick Verizon or AT&amp;T. But somebody who lives somewhere else and has it all up there, or a T-Mobile subscriber, it would give them T-Mobile. So it would be comparable to what Verizon, at least from what I can tell, comparable to what Verizon is offering today. I don't know if that's enough to, necessity bars, since that's not defined very clearly.
Right.
Would the tower, yeah, ready to be now activated?
Well, that was, that was certain testimony. And that's the other, that's the other side of it, is that it's not clear to me why T-Mobile, if they really wanted coverage there, couldn't go co-locate on the Verizon tower.
Yeah.
I understand they may have business practice and no one can do that, but, you know, if they really wanted to provide coverage there, that's, that seemed like that would be an option. Technically, especially on a tower that tall, technically that should be possible.
Yeah, there was large gaps in coverage, right? Over and over again for Priest Lake.
That's the other thing I would note, it's interesting that, I don't think we got any comments from the public saying, "Oh, great, I need more coverage." In fact, we had several actually sent the office. Oh, this time and last time. I think there were more comments last time.
Okay. Part of the test under the necessity is to not, not impact the neighbors, the neighboring parcels that you talked about. Oh, the painting loan of the tower, it's there, it's down, just a blend into the trees.
You didn't talk about, I mean, I know they do in some cases, try to look like, look like a tree. That would help, or if that's even possible for a tower inside.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, thinking of other towers where...
I think the ones I've seen are not better than that.
There's that one that's down on narrow ridge, I think you stand at Lake Hurley. It's right up on the very top of the ridge. It was a big stick sticking out, it's got a few branches. But I can't recall now how, how the branches nested for the tower, the dishes nested around the foliage.
If you want to see, I have a photo of one that's quite tall.
Yeah, I, there's, there's some around for sure. This is not a good topic. It could be, so that, I would think something a little more robust and just maybe could be, you know, up and on. So, ready for a motion? So making a motion to approve that, looking at the conditions of approval and seeing that they're adequate, or recommend to make a motion for denial that, the justice attorney supporting these. Maybe one question for staff, deliberations. So the, the pre-application work, has that been, what's the status? Is it still a, whatever, a red tag on the project, or is it?
That is correct. Until the conditional use permit is issued, it cannot be...
Has there been a review of engineering drawings and so forth of the...
Yes, I, I appreciate the question. I, I received those engineered plans rather recently, so they weren't reviewed prior to the preparation of the staff report. You know, there was, I will say, just from a quick glance, I haven't had a chance to look at them all in detail. Did you look very detailed? And there are several pages.
Yeah. And I would imagine that they show structural stability with the footings and so forth to maintain the tower, I would imagine. But does that, how does mine department review those? We have peer-reviewed engineer, or does that now go to our staff engineer at the county?
That's a good question. Milton, if you're online, feel free to chime in. I do know that the county staff engineer does review stormwater plans and road designs. I think there's a potential that we might be able to create a warm order and charge the applicant for that to be reviewed, if the commission sees it as necessary. But before I say anything more, Milton, would you like to add anything, sir?
Oh, he is actually driving.
So, so here, so yeah, if there's, if there's a need for a stormwater management plan because they're putting in a new road, or there's something that is extra like that, we'll have staff, our staff engineer review that. We don't, we don't require, we don't require the engineer plans for the structures anymore. So, because we don't, we don't have any codes that require that, so, I mean, they, they still turn them in, but we don't, we don't review the structure plans because we don't have any codes for that.
Okay, thank you. But these, the set plans you got are from a licensed civil engineer.
That's, that's my understanding, yes. And I can certainly pull them up if you'd like to see them.
So it rests on the way that the engineer standard, it's not taken lightly.
Thank you. I would assume it's okay, but the, this telecommunications industry standard that's referenced in the staff report, not including the base, or does it only reference the tower itself?
Uh, you know, my...
Sorry, that is part of our code, it has to be.
Right, yeah.
Communication industry standard, I don't know how, what is dealt with that.
Precisely, yeah. And I'm not an expert into it, but I would say that that was prepared by Idaho licensed architect, and those standards were, were met based on what the architect...
Okay.
Because of the conditional use permit, says that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And apparently, I assume it says it's in our code that they have to go to those telecommunications.
Correct. Correct, that's, that's correct. Which, that's in the conditional use permit, not in the building permit. Correct.
But we don't know if that includes structural analysis of the base, right? Maybe it's the tower itself, I don't know. So usually, I know they're integral, they're integral.
Well, they are, but all over.
Right.
It, it's, it's just as simple as sending it down to the staff engineer forum to review this stuff.
Well, that's where I saw it.
Yeah, it's easy to do. It's just a, your office email. So we, we do it with lots of things. We use our staff engineer lab. I had the other second one.
That's what I'm struggling with. Yeah. I definitely see the value of bringing in T-Mobile, they're a bigger provider. A lot of people would probably be happy with that. What I don't understand is if there's other options to do that without building another tower. Like, could they go on the Verizon tower and accomplish the same objectives? And I think conclusion four is...
Or, so my question was, these, these three permits came in together with my understanding of the, of the project, that the three were to be interconnected. So we approved the second one, the one in the middle, and we're looking at the ones on the ends. I, I guess my understanding was that the three were to be interconnected.
And so I think that is reflected in the application that we talked about tonight, about the, it's not sharing, I forget the word, but however they are, it's an element.
Yeah, it's an element.
So in order to serve, and then it bounces, and talk about bouncing signals, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's one of those technical issues where most of us are on.
I understand you may not be correct, but what I thought I remembered from the last time I looked at this is that there were microwave links that were being used to connect to the northern two towers. And so they're interconnected in that sense, that that's how, that this tower that we're talking about here today, the north, most northern tower, is connected via one of these microwave links to Bonner County, essentially, that's the way to think about it. So that would be one way to answer that question. I think the other way to answer that question, in my mind, it comes back to the necessity question, because we briefly looked at the coverage down towards the southernmost tower, and it does look like the other providers have spotted your coverage there. So there may be a good case that there's not adequate coverage, the public would be well-served by having another tower in that location. So it's, to me, the necessity is location dependent. It depends on what other services are there. We have no other services in this area, it's to be, it's a slant dump. But you have pretty good coverage from Verizon, good coverage from AT&amp;T, and I'm still struggling with, well, I could T-Mobile go and get on a different tower if they really wanted to be there. If you have three major providers providing more or less similar coverage maps, then I question the necessity of that, given that these things, that they are a big eyesore, right? Nobody wants to come live in a rural, beautiful rural area like this, have a tower next door. I get that. On the other hand, everybody also says we want good, like, phone coverage, if we want good internet coverage. So that's the, that's the balancing act, I think, that we have.
And the, I think we can reasonably say that the majority of users are visitors. This is a very, they're a very in and out community, they come and they go, so they bring the talk with them.
Yeah, three of us.
Yeah, and three plus, the winner. Anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I mean, I suspect from some of the comments that were made, the coverage may be different than what the maps are showing, but I can only really go from this map that's part of the record. And it kind of cuts off at about a little bit north of eight mile out on the rivers. And that part of the southern part of Priest Lake down in Hoonan is well, well-served, already served, which is... Well, these things are always challenging. The east side, I think, is challenging because, think of it as it's coordinated, these streams that come down out of the suburb mountains, and every one of those is in the valley. If you go down into those valleys, it's, it's like in a north-south kind of direction. Getting down, the valley's, the coverage down at the valleys, it's going to be challenging. It's actually going to be easier, I think, from the west side to do that.
Right.
But they're also heavily concentrated on the shoreline. Yeah, we look at the downhill from where the site is, it's all small lots.
Yeah.
And sites, those are still mainly summer, there's more people year-round than other than that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready to write a motion, I guess. I move to deny this project via CFP0011-21, conditional use permit on the construction and operation of a new communications tower facility to be used for inland cellular on a five-acre parcel, so a rural five acre, based upon the following conclusions. Decision is based, and I'll get to the conclusions in a moment, I guess. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact, the conclusions of law as amendments. So the amendments I would make is conclusion of law four, I think this, I think the proposed use will adversely affect properties in the vicinity. Conclusion five, I think the proposed use... And conclusion five, I think the proposed use, um, is not demonstrated to be necessary. This action is not resolved in taking of private property. The action that could be taken, if any, to obtain the conditional use permit is to file a new application with the planning department that meets the standards required by the Warner County Advice Code, or appeal to finding zoning commission's decision to the county commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner Frank Buck has made a motion to deny this project. CUP 0011-21, is there a second? Okay, there's been a motion and a second for denial of this project, CUP 11-21, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, interesting. All right, so that, that was the first of tonight's cases, the second is, uh, also for the tower that's. That it closed with. CUP 13-21, Rice Communication Tower. And we'll go back through the same process, the essence of interest, we already had that, she barely has stepped out. Okay, so, so this is the conditional use permit application requesting conditional use permit for construction of a 290 foot self-support communication tower, 75 by 75 foot facility to be used in inland cellular, on a 14.9 acre parcel, located off of Mygol Road in section 16, times at the gate north range, or west. By our procedure, first is the staff report for this one.
Josh Chambers again for the record, um, thanks again for being here and your time. The one, um, so, again, this is, this is a continued file, so we're, I'm just going to kind of be going over the updates to it and the dimensions of the tower and what's changed. So, in this instance, we're looking at a self-supported communications tower, significantly taller than the other, um, 190 feet, my recollection. Uh, the size of the actual facility, though, um, has been proposed to be shrunk by the applicant, and the reason for that being is to kind of increase the setbacks from the neighboring properties, to reduce the, the impact. So, we're looking at the location of the tower to be on a 14.9 acre approximately property. It's in the Ed Forest 10 acre zoning district, um, construction, again, we're talking in October, six weeks. A one-car truck is proposed to visit the site for a month for maintenance. And again, kind of speaking to those significant changes, it was the, you know, the fence compound which did, did impact the setback. So here is the updated site plan, showing the property, uh, the location of the, proposed location of the tower and in relation to the neighboring properties. Um, and I'm just going to kind of zoom to where I have in my staff report the specific setbacks, it's a bit hard to read on the site plan from this scale. Um, the one I should note immediately, though, is the east, which is state land. Um, the applicant is requesting a deviation from the standard. Um, and for Idaho code title 67, chapter 65, 12F, um, that is allowed in conditional use permits at the discretion of county commissioners, or sorry, I apologize, planning zoning commission, or the county commissioners, and, um, so with the condition that speaks to the county setbacks, if you were to approve of that deviation, um, that condition that it must be county setbacks, would be essentially condition approved. So, speaking to the setbacks, um, we have approximately 38 feet, seven inches to the east, and that's the state land. And to the west, 195 feet, two inches to the north. To the west, sorry, 257 feet, seven inches. And then to the south, we have 204 feet, seven inches, so we're all within, we're meeting their criteria there. This is the, um, updated proposed design of the tower, again, self-supporting. Uh, we did reroute the tower for agency comment, based on the change in kind of location, we want to make sure the FBA especially is aware. Um, nothing remarkable, DEQ just basically said, hey, our previous comment stands, which is no environmental impact comments at this stage of the project. Um, and mental health decided to comment again, saying no comment, no one else replied. Um, and for public comments, there was a variety of public comments, many of which I had covered in the previous hearing. Um, one of the new ones that kind of arose from this was concerns over future power availability in the area. Um, this person essentially wrote that, hey, you know, I don't have power right now to my, to my residents, but in the future, I'd like to get that, those services extended, and would this tower take that section? I think general, um, you know, public comment was about the tower being kind of a pretty tall, um, in relation to the surrounding trees. Um, so one of the things that Commissioner Bradshaw had mentioned before, um, that we hopefully can clear up this hearing, is access by reported easement. And so, um, the project representative did some digging, and we did find a recorded easement that does give access to the property. Um, and this will be in two parts, so just bear with me here. Um, this is the first page of that instrument number that corresponds to that easement. And this is the second, this is still the first page, but I'm just putting on two slides here for the record. Um, this is actually where, um, that easement gives access to, and it's a, it's a, it's a little bit hard to see, um, per this drawing. We can see section 16 here. It's kind of going in reverse order towards, from Mygol, so going from my west to east. So, I kind of just tried to basically select all of the areas on, uh, the GIS map to kind of better visualize what this area looks like per the easement. And again, I wrote, the only reason I wrote possibly aggressive is because, um, I don't know if I'm 100% precise, but I did my best to kind of put that in there, just for your context here tonight. And here you can see all those quarter sections. And I did map this based on the, the image that we had some for that recorded easement, and also reading the description, so I, I, so we can point out. So, so essentially, Mygol starts here, from, this is a East River Road, I believe is county owned and maintained. And so the issue was, does the easement go all across here, is it reported up into the property, essentially? And so this is the first part, this is the first recorded easement. There's another one that covers the other, that's other section of Mygol, we'll go over that in a moment, did I answer your question? Okay. Okay, and so here's the other easement, and, and this is kind of what the applicant's representative had wrote, and I kind of reviewed easement to make sure it was sufficient. Um, based on, you know, reviewing it, it does, to me, appear to suffice, um, and this was from the state of Idaho. So again, that first part, going through Mygol, just through the state of Idaho, probably. And here's that other, um, map that's attached to that easement, that reported easement, that runs through that property, which, um, it's a bit hard to see, but, um, it says proposed right of way over state land, section 14 and 15, so if we go back to this map, we can see section 15 is just east of what this one has, and then 14 is, is progress. So, again, that kind of map that was provided by the applicant's representative, when coverage. Um, and just kind of place a little for that, so staff did conclude that this was consistent with the Warner County Advice Code, and as a result of that, we are recommending approval with conditions. And all of these conditions, uh, essentially match the, the other application. So, you know, they must be developed in accordance with the site plan that's approved, if it is approved. Um, can't supersede deed restrictions, setbacks shall be met, and again, a deviation if approved by the commissioners tonight with county setbacks. You know, if they don't get it issued within two years, it'll expire, um, now they must set up temporary erosion settlement control measures, um, obtain a stormwater management plan, building location permit, and then lastly, again, um, you know, prove how it's convenient and a necessity, and again, I'll let the applicant kind of speak through that tonight as well. At this point, I can take any questions.
I, I have a question, why?
Well, we had, from, from the commissioner first, it would be judicious.
Any questions for staff, from the commission? Again, no, no questions, all right. So, now, this time, then, we'll have the presentation from the applicant representatives. Do it again.
Uh, Justin Eppen, representing inland cellular and rice towers. Different location, 190 foot self-support tower. Uh, this particular tower, as mentioned by the resident commissioners, it's, uh, our microwave hub site, that's why the profile and the shape of the tower shows all the different microwaves shooting in different directions. So this is a critical location for my side of rice towers, you know, to certainly have the towers that allow it to shoot back down to where that is located. I guess I can just address the only comment that was made, but not at this time. Somebody mentioned that concern over lack of power. I've contacted that Warner Lights, and what they've told me is that they're willing to upgrade in their power systems. So I don't see us hooking up to the existing power sources, limiting everybody else's future abilities to obtain power from existing lines.
How much power does, would its power draw, is that a question?
Typically, uh, it's, it's like an average house, so it's 200 amp service, so it's, unless it's a normal house. It's each car will like 200 amps, the reality is, is that as technology gets better and better, the amperages come down, so. Realistically, we probably wrap up on that, perhaps, but 200 is industry standard.
And just to clarify, you mentioned this is a microwave hub, is it also a cell tower?
It is.
And it's a both.
It will also be operating for inland cellular as well as any co-location companies that may want to attach to this particular tower. And as we showed in the last round, there's a gap in service from our major carriers in this.
Right, okay, any other questions for the applicant representative? Thank you. All right, now, the public who wishes to testify. Yeah, so go ahead, if you go ahead.
All right. Mary Malone, one of Apocalypse Drive. Mary Malone, one of Apocalypse Drive, right next door to the closed property. So, um, I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, proposed, the base of any tower should not be any closer to any property line than the distance of the tower height. And so, being up against state property, it will be, um, well within 190 feet of our Apocalypse Drive easement, that's well. Um, and then, so, uh, the, um, Warner County Code 12322 says, "The purpose of the Ed Forest District is to preserve, protect, and maintain areas that are rural in character and integrity of the forest with the areas." And so, I just think that that area in particular is just, needs to be preserved as such. So, and then necessity, that kind of speaks to that, is that area is just kind of, that rural area should be maintained, this, you know, some areas just need to stay rural. You know, it's out, out in this connect double bit. Um, so, we launched a weather balloon on the state property, uh, right next to where it would be located, but further down, because we had to find a good spot to launch it, so this is on 185 foot string. From my brown window, it's right there, and that's actually, it's blowing sideways a little bit, so it's a little bit shorter and further away than the tower would actually be, and this is, uh, at the corner of Apocalypse and Mygol. So it's just, you can see it would be massive in front of our houses, or anybody on the road. Everybody came up wondering what was going on, so everybody could see it. Uh, so that kind of speaks to the, how many people on the area, in the area that would affect visually, um. So, yeah, um, that was pretty much what I had. Um, also, I didn't see that they were proposing to do that tower that collapsed upon itself. I don't even, I tried looking some stuff up on that, but, and Warner County Code doesn't, uh, give exception to a tower that would do that, so, but, yeah. Apparently, they're wanting to do that anyway. I think we just, we just need to preserve that area for, for people who want to just kind of get out and disconnect. And there's got to be some areas like that, so.
And just for the commissioner's reference, um, the reason I actually did include this in my PowerPoint is I wanted to protect your privacy, but if you're okay with me showing it, that's fine. Um, so, this is kind of what we're looking at, for the, we're, if you just give me.
Our missed here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and what else?
Mike Sudden.
Back up there so the microphone will pick you up.
Mike Sudden, one of Apocalypse Drive, and we're just really objecting to the location. It's right in front of our living room window, 250 feet, and it, 200, it's huge, fat, and it's freaking ugly. I mean, who wants to look out the living room window at that? I'm sorry, guys, right in front of my window, can you move it to the north? Or it's not going to work for us. That and the setback is about all I got.
Thank you. And so, this is.
Can we do a couple?
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and add this. So that, um, comes as a one of Apocalypse Drive. And that area was some agricultural harvest, and we'd like it to kind of stay that way. When people have moved out there, knowing full well the way the cell is out there. Most of us, well, like, I have a landline, I have internet or downloads and things like that. Myself, well, sometimes work, when I'm out, we are, it depends on where you stand. So, some people have better cell than others. Having this cell tower in the, right next door to us, is more of a commercial adventure that's not going to benefit us at all. It's going to lower our property value, it's going to give us a good view. And I'm not sure why the state land thing came up, because Apocalypse Drive is deeded from, to us, we have deeded access there for us, that's, we paid for that, and we're putting data there. Anyway, it is, most of the people deal with how it is out there, and we get along fine. And we get along fine. We don't have, it may be a convenience, but it's not a necessity. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you. All right, now, anybody else in the audience want to say anything before we get?
It's pretty online.
Anybody online? Okay, all right.
Angel Wise, I don't know if I can present you on cellular waste towers. Jake, that's most of that.
I hear more on myself, but there is, it's poor coverage out there. That's why we picked this location for mobile services. The fixed internet is very poor out there. Internet-wise, we have an internet carrier that will go on the site that will provide internet to that area. And in order to provide good internet, you need to get close to people. You see towers throughout the area. Where do you have them? You have them deep in the backyard, become more and more popular because you've got to really, really get close to provide the higher bandwidths that everyone is choosing to have. So it's, yeah, it's, it's just happening. Yeah, you're seeing a lot shorter towers, but when you get out in the forest, the signals don't go through trees very well. So especially internet, it just knocks it down big time. So that's part of the reason for the elevation. The other part is there's not a lot of people in that area, so we're trying to cover a larger area. So there's not another tower that's going to be as close between like there and Koolit. And so that eliminates more towers. It's, we don't build towers until they collapse. They're all engineered. No carrier will go on a tower unless they are certified engineer by license. If the county approved has a process, then yes. Vanuatu County has, Idaho County has no process. All my towers are built structurally sound for multiple carriers just because most codes are required them to be built that way. So we just do it standalone and because every carrier, every, other than the internet companies, the tier ones, the Verizon, AT&amp;T, P-Mobiles mandate to have that done. They also mandate environmental impacts. We do have environmental impacts on that. That's from cultural to view impacts. It doesn't take in consideration neighbors. It does take in if there's a historical church or whatever nearby that might impact. So this location we picked because we're trying to eliminate more towers throughout that corridor. It'll serve that road heading south really well, serve that community with good internet. And we already have internet. You can't use cell phones for internet, but you pay more sometimes when you have that usage where you get fixed internet. So having that by the site those houses and it'll serve the ones to further east across the river too. Because of the elevation, all the residents are as you go in by Gulch Road. We also have a letter from IDL granting the setback, so we have that. We work with IDL a lot. We're on some IDL properties. We try to go on private whenever possible, just so it just works out better that way than that. They want on IDL land, we could do that. But it's, as you go down by Gulch Road, everything else then starts dropping down. So we are above most of the residents and there's a big, there's quite, there's a significant amount of tree buffers between the majority of the residents and a couple of them here, so.
One thing that was brought, and I think at the previous hearing was brought up too. Because of the fact that the tower is, like you said, that they're right here. That the property, L-shaped property, on the other side of the road, I forget the testimony before. Is it possible to put the tower up there?
So we took a long, hard look at that. And actually, I spoke with some property owners in the north as well. So what the commission asked us to look at was a location 190 feet north of my culture road on that same priest property, roughly in the same location. So we did that. Unfortunately, with the terrain that's there, we would lose 30 feet in elevation by moving it to that particular location, which means we would have to raise the tower height. And the biggest problem with that is if you raise the tower height above 200 feet, you don't trigger the lighting requirement. So then the tower would be lit, creating more of an impact and more of a visual eyesore potentially. So part of our design in putting in this location, we moved it 40 feet away to try and help out these property owners is we're trying to keep it in a location where we work, but also in a location where we don't have to light the tower. To me, that's the biggest visual impact of the tower.
Okay, thank you. Looking under that.
Chad, I can add to that just very briefly. On the tower that was approved, one of Idaho Department of Mission gave his comment on that file was, since there is no light proposed, there's not going to be a significant impact to nocturnal habitat or hours of exposure.
Yeah, I think the FAA limit is 200, 210 or something like that. So then although the FAA comment said that this is more than six miles from their airport or something along those lines, so it required as proposed, like over 200, 200 more, 200, yeah. Then it requires the lighting. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, well, that's already rebuttal. So we're closing the testimony portion of the hearing and going to deliberation.
Yeah, for that area, it's absolutely used to be.
North of that aerial that shows the injections.
Oops, sorry. This is, I don't have a mouse tonight, so I'm using the mouse pad. This is the subject problem here, which I think is even more.
It's also a touch group.
I'm sorry.
Share it. My apologies. So there's the separate property that L-shaped parcel adjacent to Apocalypse Drive. Let go, trove, sludge, and those across it.
Can you pull me a little bit closer to where the site is, please?
I'm sorry. That just stand down so that you see all. Oh, it's all there. It's all there.
Can you put that arrow where the provoked child goes?
Yeah, it wasn't too far from the intersection of the east and north line or the west of our house, just there, right? If there, talk to me.
Okay, that's for, so the use is for your.
Further left, further west. I look, okay, further east a little.
And that's the new location, 40 feet.
Yeah, we're doing it 40 feet due north.
We were down here initially, then up there. And that's, so that ourselves meets the setback. We meet all setbacks here. IDL gave us the variance there. There's a new road that goes to that parcel there, so that, that road there. Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
This is a little different.
Right next to.
And one of the souths, the house in somewhere.
Thank you. They're running straight out.
And then the balloons are to the flash.
And it looks a lot further than it actually is. Not very far. If we had moved across from adult, then we wouldn't be at all.
Yeah. That's why we asked that. But yeah, the elevation changes, so the tower would have to be sort of the same as a higher taller tower. Nice big flashing light.
A very few trees in between. There's all the rest and there's very few trees.
Open it up again. Public testimony, people ask questions, so if I make motion to that effect. I moved, we opened it up. Public testimony, I have a question. Okay, Craig, Mark, this, we made a motion to open the public testimony to ask applicant's question. The applicant's question. Is there a second? Okay, motion, a second. And any discussion of this? That's very non-favoritism. Say aye. Aye, motion passed. Talk with the applicant.
My question really is, can you, can you move? Setting aside the setback issue for a moment, can you move it further north but still staying on the south side of that property, closer to the road, in other words? In my opinion, I'd rather, I'd rather deal with the setback to the road and grant exception there, in my opinion. Maybe if we can move it further away from this supposed property and make it less of a visual ISO. Is that, so does it suit your communications needs to do that? Or does the slow drop off so steeply that it now could be wrong?
So you suggest right here?
Yeah, more or less. I mean, that's the idea, closer to the road, more out of there, view shade. Yes, it would be a setback, it would be a setback issue with the road, but I'll take you with your word, you're going to say the tower that will collapse.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I didn't put it there. I mean, I like being closer to access road and everything, but it was not something I would ever think that would be by, so people then, yeah, you can see these trees are growing, they're driving in, they're going to see it, but I mean, they, they go slow, but they are growing, so.
I think by putting in this location as well, that it opens up to more views by some of these other neighbors as well.
Could be.
Yeah, I was trying to say. Okay, that was my question.
What's, just, since you haven't closed it, I mean, even going, there's a road, and I don't know if they got 40-foot easement through here, there's a road there, so I can't even go over here. Because I think I get too close to that property and we don't have, and they'd have more view.
190 from either side.
Yeah.
You're less than 190 from either side.
Yeah.
And then you'd be boxed in. Might be able to get ourselves setback for that as well.
See, we got, we're still discussing with the applicant, so it didn't open it up for general discussion. Yeah. So let's close the reopen section, talk with the applicant again. It's back for deliberation. This is a different emphasis to the tower. Here's, this is the hub that sends it into the area, picking up from fiber itself. Or that's its primary function. Secondary would be the cell coverage here. But I'm trying to do some quick geometry. Their house is about 300 feet south with the tower location speed. Trying to think of the angle of view, 190 feet, 300 feet, 200 feet. But that angle. I don't know the advantage, but this is a great shot. Give us a view.
Yeah.
Just probably that's something. Yeah, this, this tower design.
It is for located rural areas. They didn't have a long time to be there. They didn't have service, so it's asking them to get a better view. Of course, profit. To make provision to have service, to me, could be put someplace else. My theory is that I don't think it's correct to isolate to people with view or for someone else to make a profit. They aren't providing. It's not that they may.
So it is, it's mentioned. Cell tower to start initially use every zone. So it's recognized and it could go. So even though it is the rural five acre and so forth, though, realizing that the owners there maybe didn't search the code entirely and see what possibly could happen on the property. So it is built into the code through the condition use. It couldn't even. Got the code that says you prove out the application to see what the impact is by the action on neighbors. And it's a visual light. Can't be softened in this case of the structure.
I don't see how you would do that with this type of tower. Monocles.
Yeah.
I don't think. I, I, I mean, I think we can get to the conclusions, the same conclusions we had in the earlier application about whether it impacts the neighbors. It's harder than the conclusion that it doesn't impact the neighbors.
The necessity thing, that's interesting because this does, well, for the three collective, three towers, it provides that hope. But not for Verizon, not for somebody else. It's their own system. It will provide that to the fire system itself.
The zoning district is Ag Forest, is what I'm reading.
It said that the beginning of the staff report.
And I think a lot of that, those sites were created by 190.
Oh, yes, yes. We have to go back to the previous. It's Ag Forest 10. Ag Forest 10, yep. So in the Ag Forest 10 zoning district. Which again, every zone allows cell towers to put that language in there as we say. This is comes just short of saying it's a necessity if we were the county, but we've heard that over and over again from our, our several committees that in general, they're lacking cell service and so forth, and data service, and they would like to see it approved. So sure, it's just, okay, that's a good lead in it, but come down to the site, get the site doing comfortably for everybody or legally or legally to condition.
Useful on a person that property is a necessity, and that purpose chooses a public convenience that isn't necessary to save. People in that area that don't get any.
Yeah, so we discussed before, necessity is problem. Necessity, people coming into the area sporadically with a different provider that they can't get good coverage of the 911 or whatever, but is this the right spot? Very, regionally, but very locally, the neighborhood, is this the right spot? So there's the Ag Forest, there's the zoning district news table on the screen. And just for information, Chad, what is note number three?
That specifically speaks to easements. There must be a public right way of recording.
So there's nothing else in that news table that gets us closer of the general language under cell. Well. Which is harder to cite, cell tower, or a solid waste transfer station? Necessity, but same thing for that. Necessity is a necessity, absolutely, not my backyard, my yard, side yard, it's rough, it'll downhill. Yeah. Okay, well.
Commission Reed. I made the motion to deny file CP zero zero one three dash two, which is permissioned for construction and operation within the application. How much facility used to be cellular? Fourteen point nine of April parcel, it's all back across the forest, reaching acre, based upon all conclusions. Based on. Conclusion four. Conclusion three, that proposed use will create an entity will not be dangerous to persons or the location of property. Conclusion fourth, the proposed use will adversely affect properties in the city. Conclusion five, proposed use is not a necessity facility. Based on fact. This action could be taken in any, does not result in taking in private property. So this actually could be taken in need to obtain permission use permit. Based on call.
But same thing in another sentence. It's in the motion.
Okay, the action that could be taken in need to obtain the condition use permit is to file an application with the planning department. Be standards reported by Bernard Henner, vice board, or appeal with planning and zoning commission's decision to the county commissioners.
Mr. Reed has made a motion to deny. Project CUP thirteen dash twenty one. Is it a second? Christopher Frank, I'll say. Frank, it's second in the motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Therefore, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. Okay, well, so. It's harder to say, cell tower. Okay, so that concludes our, our files this evening. Thank you all for coming. Nice to get it out. Staff presentation session. Staff and commissioner updates. Discussion. So. I'm.
So let's feel peace. Um, two thousand and five was ten sixty one. That's, that was the record year that the county had was two thousand and five. That was, that was the highest number. In two thousand and twelve was probably the lowest. And then it, it slowly started to make its way back up to, to now theirs.
Four months ago.
Yeah, and we have four months. Other, the other one I wanted to show you was the. There's a lot, there's a lot of stuff.
What else?
No, no, I don't. I want my email. I want to show you this one because we made some changes to the code. That. So, so these are the DES permits here. And, and there's, there was no DES permits in two thousand and five. So, so if we took the eleven, whatever that number was, eleven eighty four, whatever it was, and add the two twenty to that. Except the DES permits are the ones that are less than a thousand square feet, that there's no fee for. So this last week, we asked, well, it's on Tuesday's agenda, we're asking the board to eliminate this permit and change it to a small structure permit. And there will now be a fee of two hundred dollars for this permit. And we will do one inspection on the structure to make sure that they're actually building it in, you know, not inside the setbacks, outside the setbacks. And, and that they're building it without any plumbing, as it is required. So, so we, we, there are no more free permits at the county. We are charging for everything that we do. We've added boundary line adjustments to the code, and, and we've, we now have a fee scheduled for boundary line adjustments. That's also a two hundred dollar permit, and we review boundary line adjustments now. So every, everything that comes through our office now has fees attached to it. And so, and a review process. And we, we've stopped, you know, people were, they were taking, and, you know, creating twenty acre parcels and then boundary line adjusting down to the lot size minimum. We've, we've eliminated that in the code, you can't do that anymore. You have to, you have to do a subdivision if you're gonna do, you know, more than five lots, more than four lots, right? There, there was a, there's always other intended consequences when you adopt new codes. And the one that snuck through on us, that, that is giving us a little bit of heartburn, is we've limited the family exemption permit to four lots. So we may need to bring that back and talk about that number, because we've created some headings for some people. Because they have more than four kids.
Yeah.
And so we, we need to, we, we need to come back and talk about that number.
Built based on what size parcel?
Uh, zoning minimums. That, that's the other interesting thing is, we have so many people saying that they didn't use to require zoning minimums with family exemptions. Yeah, and that's what they tell us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
That was that way.
Well, we don't do that.
Yeah, that's the way it was when, when the family exemption started in the nineties, that's the way it was.
Oh, yeah.
Have to have it. I've got family property that shows it. Yeah.
Yeah, we require zone change as well.
Yeah.
That's probably why we have so many, one of the reasons we have so many, is because we're making them rezone their properties to five acre minimums to do that. So. So, so those are some of the things going on. You, you need to know, because you, you don't know, the files that go to the board. So this summer, the board has overturned every file that the planning commission has denied. Every file. Last week, they, they overturned the Clark Ford zone change, where you approved the, the comp plan change but denied the zone change. So the board overturned that decision last week and approved that, that zone change. They, they've approved every file that had a denial attached to it. So I don't know if they're, if you're looking at it, they're so much different than they are, that, that they, that they're not understanding. Jason, when he presented that zone change last week, his entire presentation was the planning commission here. He, he showed them every analysis that the planning commission gave, and it, for their decision. And he did not present his own until the very end, when the planning commission asked for his recommendation. Then, then they considered the things, the presentation that he gave for that. But it wa, he did not present that in the beginning. So there, I just, I just need you to be aware that, that they're looking at things differently than you are. And, and they're, they're overturning your decisions consistently. So I, I don't know, it, it, it's a little frustrating being staff and having to, you know, having to explain to the, to the board, you know, why the denials and why the, the different things, and why the misunderstandings, why the not the same page. I don't know, I don't know if it's a big deal or not to you, but, but when it just continually happens. With every file, I just, you, you have to stop and think, maybe there's something we're missing, or, or maybe there's something that needs to be considered or something. So.
So, so you're saying we're always wrong?
Well.
Seven of us, three of them.
Well, no, I'm just saying.
Our decisions aren't based politically.
And they're, they're not political, they sit down with the attorney's office, and, and they, they feel that, they feel that, that if they deny those, those requests, that they will be sued and they will lose. That is, that is their analysis of that file. So.
Based on our attorney's opinion.
Their attorney's opinion, yes, yeah.
So they, he's been wrong before, too.
No, I, I understand, I, I'm not trying to cause a problem, I'm just trying to make you aware that there's, that this has happened all sort of long, so.
Yeah.
Um. There's, there's been several files that were denied, that, that. There, there's gonna be a couple up next week that were recommended denial.
Um, just for information, has the board denied anything that's under that in the last year?
I don't know that they have.
Well. No, because I, there, as we did, I, there may have been. I, I don't recall one variant or. Because even, even the one out there in, in Spirit Lake, oh, they asked me that one time, and said, well, could we do half and half?
No, that was not.
Well, that's. No one's coming back.
Oh, that's right.
Actually, we just.
They wanted to, they wanted, well, there was some information that was not.
Right.
Yeah, they wanted.
Probably, just like we did tonight. Tests that are in the code are weak. They really are, they're not strong enough to be shot at, and that's what came out of it. And if they feel otherwise, or if that's unattainable in court. Which, yeah. I'd, I'd love to see if I just made it, or something goes, probably gonna come the same thing here. Your tests are so weak, how could you possibly say either way?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So I, I, I just. I don't know what the answer is, I. Like I said, Jason did a great job presenting the planning commission's decision.
Sure, sir.
That's okay.
No, I, I just, yeah.
That's okay. Yeah, all right, I mean, we got seven independent thinkers, three independent thinkers up there, but they.
Oh, there's three here tonight. Well, so.
I'd say, as, you know, usually when we do some, do some.
Yeah. So just, just, you know, to be aware of.
It's gonna be frustrating.
It is. Oh, yeah.
For all you guys, for all of us, you may wanna say, like, again, here to everyone of these meetings and see what it's based on.
We didn't, if we didn't say no once in a while, then we'd be pointed at again as being in your better far.
But, that's, you know, but it is what it is. We're not.
Yeah, that's the honest thing, though, you, that's just, I mean, come on, it's all over Facebook.
I, I, I don't know what kickbacks I ever get, because my pockets are empty. Nobody's filling them.
So can I ask, can we, can we go, O G I S, go back to that porch? Just look at the lot sizes there. All that. Yeah, the six and seven acre lots.
Oh, well, it, it.
Was that originally before?
Yeah, it was, they were, it used to be zone five acre minimums, yeah.
Yeah.
So that whole area, there were two places in the county, there were zone ten acre minimums, one of them was Hootie Valley, and the other one was Selly Valley. There were, there were two squares of ten acre lots in the Hootie Valley and in the Selly Valley.
So then everything else was five. Four oh eight?
Yeah.
This was, this was five.
Yep.
This was never pointed to be recreational, just five acre.
Yep.
Which was, that was a huge discussion in those years, you know, it's just too much, too much bodies, too, too many parcels going by. Et cetera, et cetera, so that was the backlash to tenth and twelfth.
Yep. Yep. Chris Lake is done with their. Was, they're done with their plan, they want me to send you a copy of it. So they, you know, we tried to set up a meeting with them on September sixteenth, but they were, two of them were unavailable. The rest of the committee has realized that those two were unavailable, and thought, well, let's do it anyway. I told them it's July, we already canceled it. So they want to give you, they want you to have that draft, so I'll send it to you in the email, and then you can start to look at their draft, and then they want a meeting in October.
Yeah.
Okay, on September sixteenth, we have one file of variants, and then we're bringing you a workshop on the Alpaca Farm Zone Change. It's a seven hundred acre zone change from AF twenty to AF ten out in the Selly Valley. It's where the Alpaca Farm used to be located. And so, well, there's still. Yeah, because there might still be an Alpaca there. Yeah. We, we have sent it out to agency already, hopefully that as much of that agency comment will be back in time for you to review the agency comment at the, at the sixteenth meeting, September sixteenth meeting. Uh, they'll probably be public there, but it's not intended for public comment, it's intended for us staff to be able to review with you this application. And see if there's additional information that you feel you need that we can go after and find. Because what's happening is, I'm just afraid we're gonna come on the, the first of November with a hearing file and. with a hearing file and you have to make a decision that night. And you, we're trying to make sure that you get your questions answered ahead of that hearing, you know, so. I, it is different, but I just want you to have as much information as you can, because, uh, it, it's a big ask. Uh, it, it doesn't match the comp plan, but does it? So, but there's just going to be a lot of things to look at.
Welder orders report would be nice, but there's not a lot of welds out there.
There are some.
New wells.
New wells, yeah.
I know, I know, that area that'd be of record. Larry Pete's building a new place out there, maybe he's.
Well, yeah, that'd be something to see for that one.
Well, and somebody mentioned that, you know, 70 new homes. We've, we've put in 70 new homes in the last, how many ever years out there, right?
Going to take an interesting drive. Drive up Rapid Lightning. To Upper Gold Creek.
Yep.
Go up there, cross the Gold Creek, back down to Western Pleasure, and then back down to the world.
Yep, you'd be surprised, there are a lot of houses.
You'd be surprised. It's out.
Yeah.
And those are all 10s, bigger and.
I heard they buy. Right. And that's what this request is, is, is to stay inside of the comp plan, so it's just a zone change application. But again, there's going to be a lot of questions from the public and so I just want to, I just want to give you guys a chance to review all that information. Uh, we would do that with the DOM file if, uh, if, we're still waiting for them to give us a complete application. And so, once they get us a complete application, we'll consider a workshop for that file as well.
Is he considering, uh, any property for school out there?
Um, I don't know that he is, uh, and I don't know if the school's interested. So I had a, I had a brief conversation with the superintendent and the superintendent's going to be at the city county meeting on the 10th, September 10th, at 9:30. And so, um, so he's going to come and hopefully we'll have a discussion there about the school needs. Because he does have a need, but I think he's looking more at Fongere for that school.
Is that in, is that in question? Does it need Fongere County, the school district?
No, that's North Side Elementary.
Yeah.
School that's out there.
Yeah, North Side Elementary is out there.
Oh, I'm thinking of that somewhere, sorry. Yeah, that's where it's, right, to replace the school.
So I don't know what they're going to do with North Side School, because it is that capacity. And it's all, it's all stretched.
The building needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
Practically.
Yeah.
It's.
But so do a lot of it.
Well, South Side and, and.
South Side's been pretty well rebuilt, but it, North Side hasn't, North Side hasn't been. Greatly touching the yard.
So we're going to have a discussion with him and then we'll have a discussion with Cheryl on housing.
Let me ask.
On the, on the 10th.
Yeah, on the 10th.
Okay.
When the commissioners override us, is it all three of them or is it any women?
Um, two, one or three. Well, well, the judge. Oh, that was, that was interesting, on that, on that particular file, the Clark Fork one. Um, um, Bradshaw, I think Bradshaw started off to vote no on the comp plan change.
Zone change, so he, he gave a motion.
No, yeah, he made.
To deny a, the zone change.
Well, yeah, but that was just kind of random, because then they went back and did the, the comp plan change. He started to deny that recommend.
He did.
Yeah, he voted against the comp plan change, but then he voted in favor of the zone change.
Okay, and the resolution for the call.
Oh, yeah, and the resolution, it was really true. Uh, the other one that he did not vote on was, uh, it was another, it was, was it?
It was the other one that same night.
The DOM one, he was.
No, he voted against the DOM one consistently. Uh, but there was another one who voted yes, but the, the one out of, on the river hasn't gone to them yet. We are, we are in negotiations, trying to talk to them about the difference.
Off the Spirit Lake.
Yeah, that 40 acres, I know, it was up Beach River Road from up.
The other one up the river. At the DOM.
I'm thinking of one that used to be, you said, used to be a dairy farm.
Yeah, that one, yeah, that, that. Yeah, voted 10, yeah, it was.
So they haven't seen that.
No, they, they did approve that one.
Oh, they did?
Yes, the other one was the 40 acres.
I don't see how they can do that. Primac soils. Well, that's, yeah, for me. So somehow their attorney says, oh, yeah, this, we can't win this in the court, so they, why?
Yeah, why? That one is actually one of the, I mean, a lot of them is, like you said, very vague.
Because it went to R 10. The request was to go to R 10, R 10 allows primac soils. That's why they went to R 10, was because it didn't fit AF 10.
Right, it didn't fit.
But it did fit R 10.
One of the things we have to look at, you know, in the upcoming future. Two things. I'm convinced we gotta really deal with this double headed thing, AF 10, 20, R 5 10, gotta deal with that. And secondly, the descriptions, third, I think it's okay, the descriptions. And third is, you got a zone change request in that creates an island. Is that a trigger to have the county look at an area wide zone change? So then under that, not opinion, but that, that paper that was written about zone changes, it's one case. See, if the county did it on an area wide, that would not necessarily be a spot zone. And it, I think based on that guy's opinion, it would be more of a legitimate zone change.
Well, but, but I think his analysis was that it was not considered a spot zone because it meant the comp plan. And so that's the way, that's the way that was interpreted upstairs. Then on the Clark Fork one, the hangout was the, the primac soils if drained.
So can we, we, we talk about that when you're done?
Yeah, so what, so what Jeff asked us to do was to change the zoning code to update that language to say prime soils if drained, not primac soils, comma, primac soils if drained. And then, then we started listing all of them and said, well, what about primac soils if irrigated? And primac soils, you know, statewide, if, you know, of statewide importance if drained or statewide importance if irrigated. Right? So, you, you know, all of those. Yeah, that they're not included in the zoning code. And so, so the commission finally agreed that they could not include those or hold that Clark Fork file to that standard because it's not in the code. It's only primac soils, it's not primac soils if drained. And you can say it's swing hairs, but that is their job, is to do those interpretations.
What it says.
And that will stand up in court because it is their interpretation of their code. So it was a tough one, that, that file lasted an hour.
So let's go back to the verbage, our soils, our soils report was based on 1939. Original soils report. It's been added on to.
Dated 82.
Yeah, whatever, yada, 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 however, you've got two types of soils, you can grow it or you can't. That if irrigated, there's only a handful of places in this county where you can irrigate ground. I sense why the water report is 63. That's, that's the closest we have to talk about the aquifers. Hootie Valley and Copalala Flats. There's a couple other places that run pivot irrigation, crossing Culver, Culver Road on Woods Ranch. East River Road going up the backside of 57, you have to pivot by your mare. There might be, have four others, but you only irrigate so many times, you know, a couple months out of the year and that's it. So that, that, that part of it just doesn't play anymore, because that was 1939.
Right, that's why we're talking about ditch irrigation, what was going on in Washington, good planning.
And the other one is if well drain, well, we were draining marshes, the farm marshes in the 30s.
40s, 50s.
But we don't drain wetlands anymore, that's in our code. So if well drain, that just doesn't really matter anymore, because we don't drain our wetlands or our marshes.
Or wet fields.
Or wet fields.
Right, oh, I get it. I get it, and so in that particular case, the, the, while, while it said prime farmland if drained, that area had never been used as farmland, it was all planted in trees. And so it, it, it was just, the, the board just didn't feel like they could call that prime farmland. And so they approved the zone change. Um, it was a, it was a, it was a tough one, because Jeff wasn't happy. And he did, he asked me to change the code, he asked me to change it in two places. One was to add primac soils if drained. And then the other one was to get rid of the and and the or in the five acre distinction. So in the five acre distinction, it says it has to not be these standards or, or have five acre lots around it. And this did not have five acre lots around it, but it met all of the standards. And so, because it didn't have primac soils if drained. So it met all the standards and so that's what they went with to approve it. He, he wanted to get rid of the or, but the, the discussion at the board meeting was that the and would create too much of a, there, there would be no bypass at all. Because it would have to either contain within it five acre lots or right around it five acre lots. And, and so that test would just be almost impossible in lots of areas. So I don't know if we'll get that done or not. We'll probably bring it and talk about it. So, yeah.
So maybe when you guys write files, bodies changed the way, she's written her last couple of files, talking about the soils. If you talk about the hydrology a little bit, availability of water, right, it's, you know, they say if well irrigated, but if there's no water to irrigate it, then that term just doesn't.
Well, it, it, what's the historic use of the property, right? I mean, you know, some of these, some of these lots that, you know, they, they may say they are primac soils, but they've never, they've never been used as a field. They, they were all planted in trees and the guy never removed the trees to plant grass, is, he didn't need to or didn't want to or didn't feel that the grass would grow. So the, the other question is, we've talked about asking applicants to turn in a soil analysis, but again, we don't know if we can require that or not. So that's another opportunity with bringing a file to you, is because perhaps maybe that needs to be a request. And the, we, the planning commission and I could ask for additional information to help make the decision. I just think it'd be better coming from the planning commission, so. So we'll go over that file and give you a chance to see if there's some analysis that you'd like. Okay, all right.
There was some talk about Chris, I don't know if coming back in September.
Uh, yeah, we're still.
Haven't got there yet?
Yeah.
And beyond Chris, is there?
Cheryl's sponsor.
Yeah, we got two.
So Cheryl and that one.
Oh, I'd heard it, Chris's.
Yeah. Oh.
Got someone to replace me?
Well, you haven't advertised, we, we'll get that advertised for now.
Because that's at the end of September, so you can.
Yeah, it goes at the end of September, so we need to get that advertised.
So I need to reset it one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think it's, would be your third time?
Because I did have a term, then one term.
Oh, yeah, 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 so you need some more, yes. Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know.
Yeah.
It, it's a lot of fun, we, I, it, it has slowed down some, but we are at zone change 34.
And staff wise, hours of work, is that what I'm thinking, where?
Well, the, since the M O B ordinance shut down everything, right, contiguous M O Bs.
Yeah.
So we're at 157, pretty stable. And we've probably gotten in three or four since that new ordinance was adopted. And then we just increased up to six. Yeah, our zone change is way up, our subdivision two is going to be up. Not quite 100% self-funded, but we're getting closer. But yeah, my land divisions will come to a screeching halt, we'll start to see subdivision files. Big ones, bigger ones.
Bigger ones.
Yeah, over that, it's been 12, 14.
Zone change goes to Selly, that'll be a big subdivision, that will be a big subdivision ever.
Ever recorded history.
Oh, yeah.
Huge blowback.
Oh, boy, we need to meet some new sub area planners. Yeah.
At least I'm not trying to go smaller than.
Yeah, it's all the.
Okay, so.
Right. Any else got anything for the good of the order? Right now, 8:15, and this is.